Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Um, let's see, this meeting is being taped. If anyone else is taping this meeting, please make it known. Seeing no one, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. This is my first time in the big chair, so you'll have to bear with me. Um, let's see, let's start out with any special recognitions?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. So tonight, our annual event when we invite the newest teachers to the Auburn Public Schools. So I'm gonna read off the individual who has a district wide position and then new to the district. And then the high school, then I'm gonna turn it over to the principals to do introductions. So as your name is called, if you want to, stand please. So the district level position, I want to introduce Maureen Elliott. She is an IT support person. Maureen's joined the team and doing a great job. And then at the high school, we have Kyla Burt, who is a special educator, and Ashley Fagan, who is a long-term sub math teacher. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Desto at Auburn Middle School.
Thank you.
Good evening, just right here. Okay. So, um, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I have at Auburn Middle School, just one teacher who's new to our school, new to our district, and that is Stephanie Sala. Stephanie is an extended and former substitute art teacher. She's off to a great start.
Great. And next, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lopez from Swanson.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Nice to see everyone's face again. Swanson is off to a great start. I have several staff members to introduce you. First to my left, Mr. Nicholas Schimko, new phys ed teacher at Swanson. Also, I have Mrs. Megan Spinel, who is our new music teacher, doing a fantastic job. I also have grade five teacher, Mrs. Erin Kane, new to Swanson but not new to teaching. I also have Tim Powers, who is in grade four to my right. And I also have Mrs. Lorena Avandi in grade three. So we have our power team to present to you tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome all of you.
Welcome.
Uh, next, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Stanek from Pachaak.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. We are off to a great start at Pachaak. This evening, I have two new kindergarten teachers to introduce. First, I'll introduce Tessa Fritz. She was with us last year as a long-term sub in our preschool, and we scooped her right up, and now we have her as a kindergarten teacher. And we have Miss Nicole Alain, who is also a kindergarten teacher at Pachaak. Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, Dr. Chamberlain from the Brentwood School.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. We're on the start of a great school year. I have one teacher to introduce. Her name is Gillian Anderson. She's a special educator at Bridmore School, and she has hit the ground running, and we know that we have a great school year.
So, uh, we have it, as I think, um, we've shared with you previously, we do a new teacher breakfast. And the new teachers come, and as we always remind them, every one of us remembers our first day in teaching. And we're excited to have them all on board, and the principal's here too. So, thanks very much. It's gonna be a great year.
Yes, thank you. Welcome aboard. You guys wanna add anything?
Thank you. I hope you have as much fun teaching in Auburn as I did, 'cause I did it for forty-one years, and I loved every minute.
Absolutely welcome. And if there's any way that we can support you to commit, please feel free to reach out. We like to think of ourselves as a very open, receptive, responsive committee, so please don't hesitate.
Welcome. You picked a great district to work for.
Great, thank you. Um, can I just miss?
You may, yes.
If you guys would like to go home, you may. I know you've had a long day. Thank you very much.
I don't know.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you for sticking around. Okay, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that has a citizen comment? Seeing none, okay. Um, let's move on to the student representatives' report. We have returning Ryan and our new person, Ally.
Hi, I'm Ally Chompel. I'm gonna do here at Auburn High School this year. Um, I'm a part of a lot of the clubs at Auburn. I'm in band, Rockets to Rockets, Student Council, National Honor Society, CHIAM, a lot of clubs. Um, and outside of school, I like, uh, right next door, I actually teach at the karate place. So, that's fun. Um, Wednesday, Tuesday night, um, we had the orientation night for freshmen. So, we've had a lot of fun games. Oh, no, all of them. It's been one fun game that involved M and Ms. And M and Ms are cool, so that was fun. We broke up into different groups with student council. And, um, what we did was by group, by homeroom, to help them kind of know who they're gonna be situated with throughout the year. We sat in a circle, and we had M and Ms. And based on the color M and M they got, they had to share something about themselves, whether it be like a funny memory or what they're nervous for for the school year, or something about themselves, so we could all kind of, you know, get to know each other, and they could talk to an upper classmate without feeling like they were gonna cry. So, um, that was really fun. Um, they ended up just welcoming the first day of school. There was a lot of scared faces, but being able to kind of have those student council members kind of give them a fresh taste seems good. Um, as for clubs and sports, again, um, they've been making announcements about when to join, how to join. Um, a lot of Rockets to Rockets, which involves special needs kids, and a lot is starting this week, and I'm actually a board member for that, which is really cool. So, um, student council and...
That's great, that's a great job.
And I'm Ryan Garavidi, and I'm the returning senior class committee... But, um...
Representative.
Representative, thank you. But, um, so this year, I'm taking four AP classes, AP Spanish, Calculus BC, Gov., and AP English Literature, and I'm still part of many clubs, Model UN, Quiz Show, NHS, and I'm sure I'm missing a few. Uh, going on around the school as well. Uh, today, we're, the iPads were passed out. Took a little longer than expected, but they got out pretty smoothly. Uh, school pictures are tomorrow, and next week is gonna be the Top Cop game on September fourteenth. That's gonna be in Yarmouth beginning at six thirty for the ceremonies honoring Officer Tarantino and, I don't, I forget the name, but an officer who was slain in Yarmouth.
Gannon.
Gannon, thank you. And at seven will be the football kickoff.
That's great. Do you want to have anything you wanna warn them of or...
Well, I would think Ally's well informed, because her grandmother taught in Auburn for umpteen years. Sandy Schoenfeld, fifth grade.
Yes.
Yup, yup, yup.
Yeah.
Well, you both seem very qualified for the job, and, uh, we're excited to hear you guys share news about the schools. It's really a highlight in the meeting, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome aboard. Okay, uh, next, I am seeking approval of the minutes for June twentieth, two thousand eighteen, and June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Can we do this together?
Yes.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for June twentieth and June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second it.
All right, who votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Uh, next, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So some exciting news to share. First, another nice warm welcome to Ally and Ryan. They did a super job, so it's gonna be a great year, I know. We received some really wonderful news last week. Um, we were contacted by Patty Dougherty from the Special Olympics. And we were notified that Auburn High School was considered a national banner school. And what that said was we were in the top ten in Massachusetts for national banners for our unified sports programs. So Ally just gave a little report about the Rockets to Rockets program, which pairs our special needs children with, um, with those who don't have significant needs. The unified sports program, if you've not had a chance to participate, you've been very supportive in, in supporting that financially. It takes our special needs children with non-special needs, and they simultaneously play, play in sport. Uh, we had a basketball jamboree a couple of years ago. They played track, and it all started with a bocce tournament that they entered. So, it really is, um, an outstanding recognition. Ally DeLuca deserves credit. She brought the idea forward. Um, then it obviously takes a team to, to push it. So between Dr. Lozay, Mrs. Reedy, Mr. Hanfield, uh, Brian Davis, Eileen Dennehy, and in others I'm probably forgetting, and certainly the coaches who have stepped up, it really is outstanding. We were then notified, um, that shortly thereafter, that we actually had been designated as the top school in all of Massachusetts for this recognition. And we will find out tomorrow, so ESPN has a promotion, um, they're a partner with the Special Olympics Unified Sports, that they're gonna be designating five schools from across the country as their top ones. So Auburn has made the ESPN honor roll. We find out tomorrow whether we not, we made it to the top five. But to be such, really a fairly young program in our district, um, it's really tremendous. But I think it speaks to the inclusive environment, the respect and integrity that we, that really permeates all of we do. So this is a recognition at the high school, but I think it speaks to our commitment to inclusivity that runs through all of our schools. So it's really a great honor, and all of you should take great pride, and certainly the high school staff and students too. So, we may have more good news to share. You will hear from us if that's the case.
Excuse me, does the high school get a banner to hang on the school somewhere, or?
They are. They are gonna be getting a banner, um, and depending on, so we're waiting for tomorrow. They're waiting for tomorrow's notification, and then depending, even if we don't make that recognition, even to be recognized nationally as one of the top thirty, um, but we are gonna be getting a banner, so we'll be planning some sort of unveiling to do that, so.
Awesome.
So it'll be a fun thing to do, for sure. Yes.
Yeah. Great.
And kudos. I know you mentioned Ally DeLuca, but she's been so passionate about the program from day one, so it's really wonderful what she's done.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, good point.
Thank you.
So the Top Cop football game, Ryan just, um, did share with you, and as, as you had said, Mrs. Holloway, it is in recognition of Officer Ron Tarantino and Sergeant Gannon. So this really, um, the Dennis Yarmouth School District is following in the footsteps of what Auburn had done between Auburn and Western things. So invited us down. The kids will go down and play. Uh, it's a much larger school, but I'm sure that the game, though, it'll be hard fought and hopefully enjoyable for everybody, so we shall, we shall see. In terms of the fall warrant articles for this fall special town meeting, that has been set for October twenty-third. We were notified, um, by the selectmen's office that the warrant is actually open from August twenty-seventh to September eleventh. But as we do annually, when we look at our fall special town meeting warrant articles, they're typically to get access to the homeless funding that comes through, and also to make any changes if they're needed to CIP. So Mrs. Worsbicky, Mr. Fagin, and I reviewed capital projects, and we're in good shape with those right now. But unfortunately, the way that the monies came in for the McKin evento, they came in prior to the end of the fiscal year in eighteen. So those monies need to go to the general fund, and we don't have access to them. The state typically, in the past, for the past ten years that I've been here, those funds always come in after the first of the year. So that's why you have to request them in the following fiscal year. So what we're gonna try and do, um, Mrs. Worsbicky has spoken to representative state, trying to understand why they changed it, if it's something to continue. But what we may try to do, we'll work with town hall, is to put, in case this happens again, a warrant article for the spring meeting to at least give us access to those funds if they are to come in. So I'm not sure how that will work yet, but we'll work with the town. But this time, we don't have any warrant articles for the fall special town meeting.
So, we don't have to be there, or do we need to be there for some reason?
Um, so through the chair, in the past, we have always gone anyway, just in case a question was to arise on anything. So that's typically what we've done is go instead as well.
Okay.
Okay. The next item, just making you aware, this is the year of audits and compliance reviews and such. So this is one actually from the mass teachers retirement, um, system. They actually do this on a random basis in districts, and they're really looking at census data. So they're working through, Mrs. Worsbicky, Mrs. Lynch actually will be, uh, the primary responder on this, but just wanted you, um, to be aware that will be taking place. It should cause no disruption quite much to us, good at all. In terms of the French River Education Center, I just wanted to provide for you, there is a new executive director. Uh, Mike Fields retired after a lengthy career there and really a stellar career there. So Ricky Hall is the new executive director, and we received some recent correspondence. So I just wanted to share with you, you support this through our budget. It's a three thousand dollar annual membership. But as you can see in here, there's the full flyer of courses that are available, discounted rates, um, to our staff. But also through our membership, they provide the one-call email and, um, phone call cert, uh, notification system, free of charge. They provide the Teach Point software system that we use for evaluating educators. That also comes, um, free of charge. And as it noted here, those two dispersments of home total over a hundred fifty thousand dollars from French, uh, from French River. So certainly is well worth the three thousand dollars, uh, that we get for it, and that's even on top of the courses that are certain to take advantage of it, have reduced rates.
Do our teachers take advantage of them?
They do. Yeah, they do quite regularly. They, um, when a teacher takes a course, they get approval beforehand, and Dr. Lozay and I sign off on those. But there's a fair number, and they actually utilize, so one of the offsets is they utilize local schools free of charge for the courses. And so we're happy to have them use Auburn High School. It makes it even more convenient for our teacher grade, yes. Just wanted to make you aware, as we do annually, Chief Slukis, Chief Coleman, and I have all signed off on the multi-hazard plans, missing compliance with chapter one fifty-nine of the Acts of two thousand. Uh, these were all submitted. And as part of that, it's a bit expanded as the Medical Emergency Response Plan, or the MARPs. Those need to be updated, um, on a bi-annual basis. Those have been submitted to DESI, so we are in full compliance with that. Next on the agenda are some appointments that I would seek from you. First is the appointment of a board member to the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. In the last ten years, I have served in that capacity. I'm actually serving this year as the vice president, um, under great hires. So it is my recommendation that you appoint me again to that board as your representative.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion to appoint Mary Ellen Brunell, Superintendent of Schools, as the Auburn Public Schools representative on the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And as you know, we're now a member of the Aspen Valley Collaborative, and we are a full member of there. And each school committee sends a representative to that, again, it's superintendents from all the neighboring districts who serve. So it is my recommendation that you appoint me again, serving that capacity.
Can I get another motion?
I'll make the motion to appoint Dr. Brunell, Superintendent of Schools, as the Auburn Public Schools representative on the Aspen Valley Collaborative Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote, and those are all yours.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Finally, the most coveted one is our civil rights coordinator. Dr. Lozay has served in this capacity in exemplary fashion over the past many years, so it is my recommendation that we appoint her. You appoint her once again.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Dr. Kathy Lozay as a civil rights coordinator for the Auburn Public Schools.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, Kathy. It's all yours.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll move on to unfinished business.
Thank you. So I wanted to just update you as we do at this meeting each year. These are the numbers as of August twenty-ninth. Uh, I will say to you, if there is generally some flexibility in these, we'll provide another update at the next meeting. Because sometimes people, we had someone just, um, at the end of last week call and ask to be removed from the one-call system because, um, the individual was getting calls from the school nurse, wondering where the child, why it was not in school, and let us know that they had moved to a neighboring community. So sometimes that information is slower in coming. So I expect there may be some slight variability, uh, in here. As you can see, the numbers at fifth grade are at twenty-six. But I would say to you that, um, incidentally, Dr. Lozay, as well as Dr. Lopez, I'm not concerned with those numbers there because of the additional support staff that we have between math paraprofessionals, literacy, uh, paraprofessionals. We have EL coordinators, EL tutors, I should say, we have inclusion, um, IAs and support staff. So we are in good shape there. I will say it's harder at fifth grade. The kids are generally bigger in those classes. So we continue to monitor that, and as I had shared with, um, discussed briefly with Dr. Lozay, and you may see coming forward with the numbers that we have in third grade, potentially to be looking for an increase, um, when they go up to fourth grade for next year. So we'll continue, can you continue to monitor that?
Through the chair, I need one question specifically, if I may, about grade five, as we're looking at grade six. Are we equipped at the middle school to handle such a large load? I only ask because we don't really see our class numbers, you know, that.
Sure. No, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked, because actually, at the middle school, it, it actually evens out much more. Because we have, they have foreign language teachers, they have technology teachers, uh, they've got media teachers. And the way that they structure it, you'll actually see those class sizes and the cores go down because of the additional classes that they have in the school. So it is a bubble there for a year.
Okay.
Should even help.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, through the chair, I don't know if you answered this question during the transition here. Um, what if we get, you know, one or two more students that enter the fifth grade, and now what would happen?
So, at this time, where, where children have already come in and met their teachers and worked with classmates, it's really hard to break up a class after they've all got together. We'll certainly continue to monitor this, and you'll see in the next section of the report, Swanson Road had the most number of new students who arrived, and, and literally the day before school, the first day of school, some of those registrations come in. So we'll continue to monitor, but I think even if we were to get a few more, uh, it would only increase if I want in some of the classes with the support staff in place. At least right now, my recommendation would not be that we need any additional. But if anything changes, I would come back to you with a recommendation to do that, for sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Are there instructional aids in each classroom, or how does that work?
They're not in every, through the chair, they're not in every classroom. They have them assigned by grade level. But the, the principals do, uh, really an outstanding job of making sure that particularly during the reading and math blocks, that there was additional staff in there. And, and both Dr. Lozay and I have, have made the rounds to schools, and, um, we have ample staff available in our classrooms. So I, I, I think we really feel comfortable with, with the state currently where it stands. I'd love to see them in eighteen. Feel comfortable with what we've got at this point. In terms of withdrawals and new registrations, as you can see, it was actually Auburn Mill due to new registrations and, and withdrawals actually that had the most. But in a time when many districts, and in talking with local superintendents, their enrollments are actually dipping, Auburn's is, is increasing, and this is, um, for several years now in a row. And I think it speaks to the good work of all of the teachers and staff in our schools and what they're doing. I understand for people who are, are purchasing homes that, from realtors, that sometimes before they even go on the market, they're, they're selling homes and things, which is really a testament to not only what the schools are doing, but the support that the town is providing to make sure that we're, we're giving a quality product. So, lot to be proud of there.
And I can add a personal view to that, because I put my mother's house on the market, and the same day I put my mother's house on the market, someone wanted it because they wanted their child to attend the Auburn Schools. So, we're still working out the details, but the child is attending the Auburn Schools, and...
That's very interesting.
Yep, that's what they wanted.
Then the satellite galaxy and asteroids, um, numbers, as you can see, are, these are very vibrant programs providing a great service to a large number of families across our elementary and even into our middle school. As you can see, the, the number at our asteroids program is significantly higher than it was last year. So they made some nice, um, program adjustments, and obviously, uh, parents are pleased with that, so lots of good things happening.
Any comments? Okay, may now move on to new business.
So, with each of you, uh, or the majority of you having been rep, signed up for the school committee slash superintendent joint conference, and don't forget, on the cover of the book is going to be an artwork by an Auburn student, but we'll see when we go down in November. So, um, you do need to appoint an MASC delegate. In the past, Mr. Page had served that requires your attendance at, um, the delegate meeting, and making some, some votes. And I believe those take place on Wednesday afternoon, I recall, something like that.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I think unless Gail wanted to try it again, then we should probably allow the new person to volunteer if she would like to be a delegate. Are you coming to the conference?
What's the date? I am going to the conference. What's, does it start on the Tuesday?
Wednesday.
It starts on Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Through the chair, it starts on Wednesday. I'm not exactly sure. I'm, I'm questioning myself now whether the delegate meeting is Thursday afternoon, if it's like...
They moved it.
They did.
If it's Thursday, I'd love to do it. My husband's traveling, so, um, I think I'm going up Thursday morning.
Okay. Okay. Through the chair, if I can just check with Mrs. Saun, do you remember when we need to notify them?
Um, not, we can, we can notify them at the next meeting.
We can put it for the next meeting, okay. So maybe you want to put it at the next meeting, we can know the date of the delegate meeting.
Or we could, um, change it on the fly if we need to, and we could nominate, um...
Thank you.
Now, if anyone cares to make that motion?
I'll make the, I'll go ahead. I'll make the motion to nominate Meg for, um, to be our delegate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Before she changes her mind.
And as you can see, and I think Ally or Ryan said it, we are certainly, and the principals are often running lots of events, uh, taking place tomorrow night. We've got instrument rental, we've got curriculum nights that start, uh, next week, and then continue right on through, and then a week from Friday is the Top Cop game, if anyone has interest in traveling to Yarmouth.
Excuse me, what does STUCO stand for, the Blood Joint?
Student Council.
Oh.
My apologies, Student Council, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? We now move on to teaching and art. Dr. Lozay?
A few updates. As Dr. Brunell mentioned earlier when she introduced our new hires, we do host a new teacher breakfast every year. We held that this year on October twenty-first. We welcomed all our new teachers to the district that morning. They come along with their one-on-one appointed mentor, which the principals pick. They really do a nice job of matching them either by grade level or content or interests, so that was great. What we also try to provide them is some mini workshops around the district, around contracts, forms that they have to be sure to fill out, how to use our technology, some real critical things they're gonna need to know the first day. And of course, when we take them on that tour, we take them by yellow school bus, so they get to feel what the kids feel. But they had a great time doing that. Um, in addition, we also recognize our teachers who are awarded professional status. And that happens to any teacher who starts their fourth year in the district, and it's really the next milestone for our new teachers. So it's something to see, and we award them with a certificate and a small token of our appreciation for their dedication. And our food service department put on a great breakfast. Every year, she's adding something new to it. It was quite the spread this year. I think everybody loved it. And I think Dr. Brunell can attest to the energy in the room that morning. It's really exciting. It's a great way to kick off the beginning of our school year. The opening days, I do have the agenda in your packet. What I really want to highlight is our kickoff on August twenty-seventh, when we had the amazing opportunity to hear Travis Roy speak. Some of you may know Travis Roy. He is a former college hockey, ice hockey player for Boston University. And way back in like nineteen ninety-five, first time he was on the ice in the first eleven seconds, he hit his head against the board. And sadly, he was a quadruple agent from that point on. His message, though, that day, I mean, he really emphasizes that sometimes we can choose our challenges, but oftentimes, our challenges choose us. And it's in those moments when these challenges choose us, and we have to face them. It helps to find who we are, but more importantly, who we might become. And he goes on to really tell us his story, and he's such a soft-spoken man. Everybody just was spellbound. And he went on to share with us some of his accomplishments. I mean, he went back and finished his degree at, at, uh, Austin University. He's written a book. He's received numerous awards across the country. He goes and speaks to students and business people and teachers. So he's spreading this really positive message. They were actually members of our audience who were in tears after the fact, and many reached out to us to thank us. So I really felt it was quite an inspiring kickoff for this year. We all left feeling really positive. And the next day, which wasn't quite as exciting, but it is in your agenda there. We have some PD. We did a lot of work with Power School and Schoology, and then the science people had some professional development. We have some special ed, special, uh, professional development. And then we also allowed our principals to meet with their various groups of teachers because there really isn't enough time to really get involved with them, and we just used the first day for that. So that was great. We also conducted some team building, especially at the middle school with a new principal there, so it was a great day, great few days, actually. In terms of PD, again, over the summer, every year, you know that we offer opportunities for our teachers to put in proposals. So we had a lot of curriculum work. A lot of it was done in the areas of science, social studies. We have a few new AP offerings. Oftentimes, AP courses are changed, so teachers need to go back and take the training again, so we offered that opportunity. We also had teachers attend some restorative justice professional development. We trained a bunch of our teachers and our IAs on CPR and AED. And then we had to send our A and V, which is our restraint trainers, back out to be recertified. So we have that ready to go, so we can train our staff as well. So I say kudos to all those teachers that come in every summer and really go above and beyond to keep dedicating some time to our, our staff, uh, students. And lastly, summer school was a big hit. I shared with you in June that we were offering five different summer programs. The enrollment was amazing. The enrollment was amazing. The pre-K to twelve extended year program had approximately fifty students. These students have to be on IEPs to be eligible to attend. In our Title One remedial program for grades one to eight, we had close to a hundred and thirty students who enrolled and attended, which was awesome. We extended our kindergarten readiness, readiness program from two weeks to three weeks, but we had almost forty-five students that were able to attend that one. STEM camp, which is only for great students in grade six to eight, had thirty students. And Camp Invention, which we only started a few years ago and it had originally started with about twenty-five students, is up to over seventy-five students this year. So we're thrilled that so many people are taking advantage of this. And we also try to, um, provide surveys at the end. We provide the surveys to parents, but we also ask teachers for their input. And we always get all the positive kinds of feedback, which is great. But this year we actually got a few really constructive suggestions that we're gonna look at for next year so that we can kind of grow and enhance the program. So we're looking forward to those conversations. So that's that.
Excellent. Any questions or comments, Dr. Lozay?
I actually have a kindergartner this year and I can tell you that many of the parents who sent their children loved it.
Oh, great. That's great to hear.
I would just say that, um, is it Travis Roy? Travis Roy, yeah. I spoke to a few, few people who are usually, um, pretty difficult to impress and they were, they were impressed. So they, they went out of their way to, um, comment on that and they said it was just an excellent presentation. So hopefully, um, I'll get to see him in the near future. That'd be something. I just had a question regarding Power School. I heard that it was working well early on. We're well ahead of, um, everything as far as scheduling goes. And does it continue to look that way? Are people taking liking to it or are we struggling or how's that working out?
Just through the chair, our reports and our conversations with Karen Burkhart and Eric Hugia, who's kind of rolling it out, say that it's a natural learning curve. That they expected that any new program would take some time. I think we're finding that some teachers who are really adept at technology are taking off with it. Others who are a little less adept, needs a little more support, but they're trying to provide that. So I don't think we're surprised that it's where it is and that it still needs a little work. We're getting there.
How about the new teachers? They're on the level playing field with the veteran teachers, correct?
I would say yes, yes. Some of them are very ticky.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's the case. Excellent. Well, thank you for that report. And we now move on to policies.
So within your packet, there are three policies. Uh, the first one is the homeless students enrollment rights and services. And this actually, um, came forward from MASC and is regarding updates to the McKinney-Vento Act. So as you can see, there are a few changes to it, particularly with regard to, um, the awaiting foster care placement. Now actually there's a replacement policy which addresses education opportunities for children in foster care. So my recommendation would be that you accept the changes, the amendments to policy J F A B D. The next two, you could certainly take together on first reading if you so wish. These are recommendations directly from MASC. And then the third one, the homeschool one, I actually made some changes to. We just recently approved it at, uh, one of the June meetings. And, um, in speaking with the parent who was a homeschool student and doing some more investigation, looking at case law around this, running it by our attorney, and actually looking at other school districts, we actually had left office section, most notably at the very bottom there, on what types of documents can be submitted. So it does need to be agreement of the parent and the district if other means are provided. And I will tell you, over the years, homeschooling plans come in. I review through them carefully, send out, um, we actually have to meet their criteria as set by school committee. They have to put in a number of hours, the, um, subject matter, uh, that they're gonna be undertaking and the competency of the parent as well as materials that they're gonna be using. So they send that in. And then parents have the ability to choose how they want to demonstrate that their child has made progress. So, um, many do it by sending in dated work samples. Um, some send in standardized testing that they pay for it to have done and, and bring it in. Um, we had a family who at one time would invite, uh, Dr. Lozay Ari to the home and actually see projects and things they had made. So they have a variety of ways that they can do it. But before the next school year's plan can be approved, they have to demonstrate that progress has been made. So just wanted to recommend that amendment, um, to you to be in compliance.
Um, why don't we take the, the first, um, three policies that'll be bundled together and then move on to I H B G? Does that make sense?
Sure.
I would entertain a motion to approve, um, the first three policies.
I'll make the motion to approve the above named policies as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Miss a vote. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the homeschooling policy.
Make a motion to approve the homeschooling and incentive pursuit of program of home education policies as presented?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Brunel, I would just ask, have we had any issues with, um, oversight of, of homeschooling in the past? Or have we had pretty positive relationships with?
Very positive relationships with them. Um, and in fact, when I send the letter of approval, I always offer to them that, um, you know, if ever they want to have their child return to the schools, wanna visit the schools, um, or ask any questions have made, to certainly, uh, we to do that. And, you know, different, uh, homeschooling parents have taken advantage of some opportunities in the schools that are allowed for them to do. Uh, others choose not to, but it's really been a positive collaborative relationship with all of our homeschooling families. It's been nice.
Okay, good. And it's not too much of a burden, the oversight, um?
No, it, it, it really isn't. I mean, we, I review them, uh, a couple of times a year as they come in. Uh, and, and parents, I have found, by and large, have been very responsive and receptive to making sure that they're demonstrating progress. And, and we've had some families who, um, once they try homeschooling, um, may come back to the schools. You know, just as some have gone to private school and things. But, um, no, it's, uh, it's a time-consuming process, but one that's important, I think, to make sure the kids make progress too.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for, um, looking into that and, and, um, making the change, necessary changes to the policy. And thank you to that parent who brought it to our attention. It's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. And do we need an executive session?
We do not.
We do not? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll most to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. Good night, everyone.